What is going on my good people? Welcome to the fifty second installment of the Recon's Peace segment. Now in some alternate reality, Earth Two Piece, where I'm supposed to be doing this weekly and I actually do it weekly. This Recon's Peace series turns a year old. So in that alternate reality where Recon is actually consistent, where I'm consistent, it's a year old. But this isn't Earth Two Piece, this is Earth One Piece. And let me tell you all something, son. In this reality, there's always been one constant. From my very first video that I made on the old channel in two thousand and thirteen, there's been one constant, man. And that video was how I got into One Piece. And within the confines of that video, I recall putting over my endless amount of love for the saga of Jaya and Skypia. And my love for that arc has only progressed as time has gone on, man. This arc means so much to me that I was like, you know what, man, I've been in a heavy mood, I've been wanting to reread it. I was like, son, let me just come on here and do a live study session of this arc because I just, I love it. I like true, this is the arc to me, man. But I, I, it's not gonna be normal studying in terms of like connecting it to the rest of the One Piece series. It's just studying for me and my own writing purposes, you know, so. It'll be basic, I was gonna do this on my own, but I was like, why not make it to Recon's Peace? It's my podcast and if I can do whatever I want with my podcast, I wanna do a live study session about Jaya. You feel me? So I was like, you know what, I'll read a couple of chapters, study about, and we'll be out of here. But before I get into that, before we get into the Jaya awesome sauce, I need to tell y'all. I picked up the Ace's Story Novel Part One, finished it in two nights. It was so much fun to read this, this, uh, this book right here, man. To see Ace's adventures, his journey. I don't wanna spoil it, just in case anyone out there wants to pick this up. But there is some cool little tidbits and insights and locations that you hear of and that you see. And these little moments that you've heard within flashbacks, including Ace's story, and they flush them out within this. And it was just so cool. It's really, really short. It's a really short read. Uh, there aren't that many words either, so you can really plow through it in just a couple nights if you want to, man. It only took me like two or three nights. So definitely go out and pick it up. If you're an Ace tard, go out and pick this up, man. It, it truly was awesome. There was a lot of emotional moments in here wherever, um, quick little, it, it, it's barely a spoiler, but eh, if you don't wanna hear, just skip like ten seconds ahead, where Ace mentions Luffy. You know, and he just starts talking about the fact, you know, he's, he's Luffy, he's my little brother. They just say that type of stuff, bro. Like, it was hidden, man. It was hidden hard, but really, really nice stuff. I really enjoyed, uh, my time with this novel. Um, and I'm looking forward to the second installment because we're left off, even though I know where Ace's story goes, I can't wait to see where the next installment with him and Deuce continues in the Spade Pirates as they go into the new world, man. I'm super, super stoked, uh, to get the second volume whenever that ends up released. But now then. Alright, man, I got my water. It is time to dive right in to volume twenty-four of the best-selling manga in history. By God, nearly the second best-selling comic of all time. It is the one, the only One Piece. No, I don't know how far I'm gonna get into this volume today. But let's dive right into it, man. I got my notebook ready for this study session, man. It's gonna be character, setting, dialogue, and then other. I usually switch it around for, it comes to the highlighters, but you know what? Dialogue to yellow, orange for other. So let's get right into it, man. Skypia, oh, just look at the, look at the cover, man. It just brings good vibes, son. Even Bellamy, like when I see Bellamy, I'm like, bro, that's that dude, especially post Dressrosa. Bellamy, son, we're a part of it, alright. Yo, this has one of my favorite, you know when Oda leaves his author's note at the beginning of this volume, this is one of my favorites. I think this might be my favorite. Because this is something that as an, as a creator, you always want to see what someone that's really close to you would feel about your work. And here Oda shares a very comedic one about his parents. He states, "When I visited my family recently, my parents expressed an opinion about One Piece for the very first time. That story about the deer was really good." And, and Oda's like, deer? And he has the, the Snoop Dogg picture right here. But that's so cool that his parents were like, yo, you know what, man? Drum Island was heat. Can you just imagine in the year two thousand and two? No text messaging, none of that, right? I don't know if they shot him an email, I don't know if they called them up, I don't know if they went to his house, but they were like, you know what? You know, Oda, the deer was goat, you know? You know, the story about the deer and the doctor, like that was heat, it was fire. If I would've been there, I would've been like, you know what it was? The legendary episodes, what was it, seventy-nine to ninety-one? Volume sixteen to se- or, yeah, sixteen and seventeen? Drum Island greatness. That's another one. I need to dive into one of these. I adore that arc. That's another arc that has consistently been praised on this channel, man. I love this right here. I, I love looking at this one in color in the, in the compendium that I have. I should pull that up. It's the Recon's Peace, man. Let's pull it up. Let's see, this one I believe starts in Jaya. Right here, if I'm not mistaken. No, I think this one starts mid Skypia. Does this one start mid Skypia? Yeah, it does. So I gotta get my other one. It's blue Skypia.
Yep, alright.
That opening will always be legendary to me, man. Always be legendary. Volume twenty-four. I love this cover. Dude, this color page is so incredible. Man, it's filled with plying, flying, plying, flying pigs. Sanji's looking like a goat, Sanami's wearing glasses. I mean, what more do you need, son? Alright, here we go. Legendary volume twenty-four. Right there. Looking great. Let's see if they, there it is, in color. Looking really nice. I'm gonna save this around. Oh, they even have the Snoop Dogg one right there in the corner. So I'll have this open right here for reference later. See, right, it's volume twenty-four. Dude. Love this arc. So, volume twenty-four titled The Legendary. This statement that forever changed the game for me, man. And I mean that from the bottom of my being, dude. This statement means so much to me, man. I don't know if, I, I highly doubt we're gonna get into it in this video. But one day, I will go in-depth on why I love chapter two hundred and twenty-five slash episode one hundred and forty-six slash seven of One Piece, man. I It's people's dreams, man. It's people's dream. Anyways, this covers from chapter two hundred and seventeen to chapter two hundred and twenty-six. Alrighty now, man, if anybody wants to follow along, I'm gonna be starting off on chapter two hundred and seventeen titled Stowaway, so if you want to follow along, you know, pause the video, get whatever you need in order to follow along. Or if you don't wanna follow along, you just wanna listen to me ramble for the next hour, I'm all cool with it, coach. I'm all cool with it, man. So let's get right into it. Chapter two hundred and seventeen. Now, a quick note on just the cover pages in general. Uh, as a big fan of video games, I love side quests and I love side quests and how certain games utilize them because they give you a chance and opportunity to see certain things that you wouldn't be able to see in the main plot when it comes to other really cool characters and to spend time with other really awesome characters. And since you're really not, you're not able to do that extensively unless you have a, like an episodic type of series where, where stuff like that is, is, is possible. But if you wanna keep your plot moving forward, that's really hard to do, especially when you have such a large cast of characters. So I appreciate that Oda, even for a character like Hachi, that at this point in time, we did not know the importance of Hachi. At this point in time, Hachi was only an underling of Arlong, not even the main antagonist of the arc. He was only an underling. And he got an entire cover story dedicated to him, which you would later know, no, no, we know why, you know, he got one, cuz he's such an important character. But it's so cool how Oda gives us these side quest type of things within his cover pages, you know, showcasing where his characters are and what they're doing and how they get from point A to point B. So next time that we see them, we're like, that's what they were doing in the cover page, you know, we saw their journey. And he does that for so many of his characters, especially his antagonists. And it's so cool, man, but anyways, this is a quick side note. I appreciate that Oda takes his time to do that. Let's start it off, man. Lady Hina, look out, there's still a few of them left. And by the way, just a quick little bit of insight, um, like I said before, this, not a lot of theory crafting will be here. I mean, listen, if I see Instant Messenger Sama on page of two hundred and twenty-one, I, I'm gonna be like, yo, I'm taking out my other notebook and I'm like, M Sama note right here, you know, but aside from that, I don't think there's gonna be any theory crafting or just connecting the story or anything. This is really just for me where I love analyzing and studying my favorite stuff and asking myself why I love these things. And you know, what works, what doesn't work, that type of stuff. Um, I found, I feel like the best type of inspiration and studying you possibly do is by reading the stuff that you absolutely adore. And so because of that, I was like, you know what, man? Instead of doing this off-air, like I always do, I was like, man, let's do this on-air. You know, let's do this, let's make an entire Recon's Peace out of a study session. And, um, and so this is basically what it is, you know, it's just me, if I see something and I wanna ma- make note of it, I'll make note of it. But aside from that, I just really wanna gush about Jaya. And if I get an opportunity to get some write, writing inspiration from this, then I'll write, rewrite it down. You know, that's basically why I'm doing this, man. So if you're looking for some theory crafting, I'll talk about an instant messenger someone most likely, cuz I always do when I'm like Alabasta and Jaya. But aside from that, I don't think I'll be doing any theory crafting or any of that type of stuff, man. This is mainly just for me and, and for writing inspiration. Regardless, Hina is furious. Now here's a quick little insight, man. Two thousand and two was around the time that Jaya was releasing, or two thousand and two, two thousand and three, Skypia, that era. The biggest star in pro wrestling at the time was Dwayne The Rock Johnson. And I know this because this was whenever I was deep and I, I've al- I've always struggled my entire life, from the moment I came out to Wum until now, I've always been deep into professional wrestling. I love wrestling, bro. Always will, always have, and it's just something that's ingrained in my blood, man. But in two thousand and two, when Austin was out the door, the biggest star in the entire world of professional wrestling was The Rock. And his key thing when it comes to, his key quirk when it comes to how he speaks is he always refers to himself first. He has that third person that, you know, uh, 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 way of referring to himself. The Rock says, "The Rock says, da-da-da-da-da, The Rock says," you know, that's The Rock. Hina is furious. I genuinely believe that in the middle of Oda writing Alabasta, he was like, I wanna give a character this quirk that The Rock has. I guarantee, I guarantee, because we know that Oda's a big wrestling fan. This is a well-known fact that he's a big wrestling fan. Now, I'm not sure if that's limited to just, uh, New Japan and All Japan and, and Noah and all the ones that are over there in, in, in Japan. But because of how much of a global brand WWE was, especially WWF in those days, on how huge um, WCW and WWF were, there is no question in my mind that he knew of The Rock and he knew of The Rock's catchphrases. So I strongly do believe, and no one could talk me out of this, that The Rock influenced the way that Hina speaks. No one's gonna talk me out of that, man. But regardless, we continue. With who yourself? You won't take me out without a fight. And he says this, he goes right down and Hina just flexes. I mean, she's still on the phone. Do you know how beast you have to be to still be on the phone and you knock dude out? Just casually, casually, so boss. Then on the bottom, you're full body and jangle like if they're front row seats at a pro wrestling event, just losing their mind. Whoa, so that's amazing. It's part of the bind, bind fruit. Everything that passes through my body becomes bound. Say it's your motto. And what I love about this is it's, it's said in a, it's said in a way to where we're immediately informed of her ability. But it's done in a way to where you see these guys are fanboys. It's a part of their character. So we don't need an info dump, we don't need an Oda box. It's through the dialogue that we get all this information. And it's a really, it's a really key portion cuz it's memorable. You know, you, you always remember, or at least for me, I always remember when, uh, when Hina's abilities are first, uh, told to us because it's through fanboying. It's like flutters, you put me in the manga, I'm doing the same thing. Yo! That's Hina's bind, bind fruit, you know, like it's that type of stuff and I, it's always appreciated. And in the following panel, you have her stating, "I'm mad at you, smoker." And this dude is still getting binded by this boa constrictor-like bind. And then in the following panel, you see him on the floor, he's shook, and she sits on him. Continuing with this boss-like mentality. And I'm like, yo, this is an amazing introduction, for what, a lot of reasons come to mind. Because the straw hats got away and you seem pretty happy about it. Now, this is gonna be my first little bit, uh, uh, my first little note here. Because I always adore in a story when you show history between like members, any member in the world, honestly, but history between members of, of a faction that is not a part of the main protagonist. So if, whether it's an allied faction or a, a faction that is directly opposed to you, whatever the case may be, uh, 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 just a faction in general that is not a part of the main cast faction. Whenever they reveal some sort of history that they have together through their dialogue. And this one is so good. Because what you have here is a situation where Hina's telling Smoker, like flutters, "I know you so well" that just by the tone of your voice, I can tell you're not upset about this because I know you. If you really wanted to capture the strides, you would be cursing up a storm on this microphone. But you're not, you're just chilling. You wanted this to happen. You know, and, and I always appreciate showing backstory or, should I just say, showing character history through dialogue. It's, it's just, it's a really cool little way to sh- to show way more than, you know, it, thi- this is way more effective than giving like an entire long page or even just a, a, a panel of, oh, they have history because A, Y, and, and, and B, right? You know, like, it's way more effective than that. And it's, it's a commonly used, um, piece of dialogue and it's something that's used in almost every single story there is out there, but it's something that is always appreciated cuz I, I adore it. I love that type of stuff. You know, cuz it just adds to, okay, how did they meet? How did they, um, end up knowing each other so well? Were they in the same division? You know, did they just come across as, as cool with one another? Were they rivals coming up? Like, it just brings up all those questions and and I really love and appreciate, uh, whenever they do stuff like that, especially in this wonderful world that I love in the One Piece world. So we're going to the next page. We go right back to Alabasta and we see first from like a really, really far view and then we close right back in. Hey, who was the princess talking to? I don't know, but it doesn't matter. Wasn't Princess Vivi's speech wonderful? Sure was. We do, we have to do our part, even though we're just little folk. How can you say that? And you see the aftermath of that legendary Nakama speech moment where they all throw up the X and you start seeing that immediately post-arc. You see the importance, the, uh, and, and, and how awesome this adventure and this journey that you were on truly was. Because you see the people of Alabasta being like flaggnards, man. Our princess is back, she's back doing her thing. And they're just celebrating, they're so happy. Why are they happy? And why are they able to freely be happy? Because the king pwned Crocodile and put a, that stopped all that nonsense. And it immediately makes everything that you just went through, it validates all that in an instant. And Oda does that in every single post-arc. Every post-arc, especially for his major arcs, like your Alabastas, your Ennis Lobbies. You know, the, um, with, with, with Marineford and with Dressrosa and I'm going to soon post Wano, like during, after like the really, really, really big, long arcs, he always has some sort of validation after that. Skypia, the one I'm covering right now, you know, so. Alright, let's start rebuilding. We go back, we see the, the dugongs, the legends themselves. And you see right here, arf, goes right up, then we get another really, I love these paddles, dude. Go right back down to the dugong. Then we go right back up to the birds that are in the sky as they're hovering across, and then we once again get to see what's happening inside of the town. Ha, ha, ha. What's so funny, Toto? You haven't stopped laughing since you heard the speech. I can't say, it's a secret. Ha, 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 ha. Did all those sandstorms apple your brain, old man? Man, dude, e- once again, immediate, y- you get this sense of, man, what a journey. Because when he states, "Take care, Luffy. Come back someday and have a drink of Yubu water." The very first thing that you think of is that night when they first met. You know, and all those little sequences and for me, since I first experienced Alabasta and this stuff in the anime, I immediately think back to that episode, the music that was playing there. And it just, it, it's stuff to make you think back at the journey, man. It really, really is. You see Koza right here. Ha, ha, what are you people waiting for? Dig for water, dig, okay. We go right back when we see the, the desert alligators. "I hear things are bad in Alubarna. Then we'll go there. We have to hurry and reclaim Yubu from the desert. It's an important crossroads in the west." "All the canals of, of the Sendora River need to be repaired too." Uh, hey, what about the casino? Who cares? It's closed. Let's go, you guys. Right here, we see the, the trollish crab. And then she said to me, "Father, I have something very important to tell you. I'm a king, but, but no title is dearer to me than that of father." What are you saying, your majesty? And you're right there, in that immediate moment, that it completely encapsulates Cobra's entire character within the confines of this story. Like, there is nothing more important to me than the name, than the name that's attached to me of being your pops and being a part of this family, which is why even above being king, he to this very day asked those questions about the Void Sanctuary and the Reverie. He was willing to go about on that journey to embark, to ask those questions. Cuz that's, of course, that's for the betterment of his people. But first and foremost, that is for the betterment of his family and his lineage. Like, he wants to know, he needs this information to prop- to propel it forward through Vivi into the next generations. And you know, that's just, and that's such an important and treble part of his character and it comes back to this one statement. Love this panel. "I'm Igram Pell. I can't believe you're gone." And right here, the legendary Pell survival panel. "I can't even shed a tear. Why is that, I wonder, Pell?" And right here, we see whenever Pell, um, of course, uh, survives, but before that, we cut right back and we see Vivi on the chokobo. I love this panel right here, man. This is such a dope panel because it's like, when you look at this panel, you're like, man, this is, so this is what happened after they all threw up the X. You know, this is what took place. This camel special, I guess that's what Princess Vivi said, and it's a candidate for the Supersonic Duck Squadron, but it's just a stupid camel. "Yeah, alright, thanks for everything. Would you, when you get home, get lots of rest. So impatient." "Hey, you wager, forgot your headscarf." And that's how you figure out that Pell's alive. "Alright, Karu." "Let's go home to Alubarna." As other countries watched in amazement, the Kingdom of Alabasta recovered with astounding speed. And the final panel that we get of Vivi in Alabasta is this right here, of her running on the chokobo back to Alabasta. So great. Let me write that down right quick, man. Because Oda's been always, I mean, by God, the best, to me, the image of Alabasta, not only just Alabasta, to me, that, that, uh, volume, where is it? Volume twenty-three? Oh, I don't have it up there anymore. But that image in volume twenty-three, eh, slash episode, I believe that's one twenty-nine, when Vivi throws up the X and the strats, or the strats throw up the X to, to Vivi right now, the sign of friendship. That one went to me as anime, man. Like, that was such a powerful moment when I first experienced it. That's to this day, when I think of just the word anime, that's the first thing that comes to mind. That or the, the walk to Arlong Park with, with, with episode thirty-seven stuff. And that stuff right there, I'm like, man, that, that's anime to me, bro. And so those powerful images have always left an impact on me, but the fact that in, within the post-arc, he's able to deliver that one side of man, this is how their journey continues. You know, Vivi's journey as a princess now officially begins. Of course, she wasn't able to join the crew, but she has a very important role to play right now. And the final panel that you have is just her with Karu and the way that it all started, going all the way back, man. That's the way this saga started, bro. You feel me, so? I love it. I, I love that final image. Yeah, man, it's some great stuff. Let me, let me, let me write that down right quick. Actually, let me use my other pencil since this is something else. Alright, and then we cut back right here, we see Smoker's ship. "Captain Smoker, hey, little lady, how's the leg?" "Please don't call me that." You see my boy Smoker just yelling. "Get some coffee poured?" "Thanks." "I saw the wanted posters. It's quite a bounty in these two now." "You know what his swordsman did? You mean Roronoa Zoro? He defeated a hundred bounty hunters at Whiskey Peak." Excuse me, and he brought d- down Daz Bones in Alubarna. Once again, within the confines of the post-arc, showing the entire journey you've been on to this point. From Whiskey Peak to Alabasta. And be like, Ragnar is how far we've come. "Daz Bones, the assassin? The bounty hunter from the West Blue. He was calling himself Mister One." "Crocodile surrounded himself with an ex- with an army of extraordinarily dangerous criminals, but they lost." You know, immediately saying like, man, we know how dangerous those dudes were and they still lost to the king and his crew. "As for the Stride Gang, we'll settle things with them another day." "Yes, sir." And I just love that so much because now you see the continuations to all their stories. You know, with Vivi, we know that eventually we're gonna run into her again, and when we run into her again, she's gonna be an awesome princess, man, having taken care of Alabasta, Radio the Reverie, as next time we saw her. And then with Smoker, like, we're gonna get him next time, dog. You know, at this point, we're already rivals. And it's just such a beautiful panel to have both of them, uh, standing just like that, like, you know what? It was a great journey, but we'll get him next time. And I just, I love that. I love that, especially since it comes right after Hina validating that Smoker was actually happy to let him go, you know? "I guess the Navy isn't coming after us." Uh-huh, uh-huh. "I think we lost them." Uh-huh, uh-huh, uh-huh. "Come on, is that all you can say?" Everybody's like, yo, "We miss Vivi." "Quit crying. If you couldn't stand the leave, then you should've kidnapped her." And you gotta love how that comes from Zorro. That is something only on that crew Zorro would say. He's always the only human being on that crew who would even mention kidnapping Vivi, you feel me? "Oh, what barbarian, you're mean, moss head, three sword style." I forgot about that one, three sword style. "Wait, Luffy, that's not an insult. Four sword style, then. That's not any better." "Listen, try Natto. Tell him, it only stinks like Natto, which is fermented soybeans." "Fine, blow your heads off." "Oh, well, it's about time I, I thought you'd never leave that oversized sandbox." And right here, the legendary return of Miss All Sunday. Zorro looks back, Luffy and Sanji are like flaggnards, especially San, my boy Sanji, he's, he's blew over the moon, you feel me? "Here to venture comrades, they will bring it on. What are you doing here? What a babe. Enemy raid, enemy raid." And the chopper immediately, he goes to do his classic chopper, chopper core. "Who is she? Huh? Oh, it's you, you're still alive?" "Hey, rude, don't point those at me. I've told, I've told you that before." And right here, I gotta write all this down. This is, this is brilliant, this genius. Right here, once you find out it's Miss All Sunday, what takes place here, right? We get to see all, all of the characters and their reactions. I always love when Oda dedicates time to showing how every single straw hat would react to a certain moment. We get to see how all, how different all, all of them are and how hilarious all of them are. So, small character dynamics and reactions to other characters. Dialogue. And then when it comes to Miss All Sunday, when Robin comes back, what's the very first thing that, that, that she says? "I thought I told you all this already." What is this doing once again within this post-arc? It is reminding you of the journey we have been on, cuz the very first thing you think of is when Robin went in like swimwear and blew up Igram back in Whiskey Peak. Cuz you're like, flaggnards, what a journey we've been on, and now you're joining us? Her character introduction is still one of my favorite character introductions in all of One Piece, out honestly in all of anime. Like, she has one of my favorite, it's, eh, for sure, top five, uh, character introductions in the story. It was just so cool, man. I was like, yo, who is this? I was marking out. I mean, I'm sure, it was so long ago, but I'm sure I was marking out, you feel me? Yeah. The fact that, you know, just validating every single thing that happened on this journey up till this point in time from the last arc, within just what, sixteen pages? Within just sixteen pages, you've already had like five callbacks to how long this journey's been and how far we've come. The fact that John Go and Full Body were in this from Kuro and, and Krieg. It's like flaggnards, man, you know? Just these little small things. And he's, he's so good at doing that and it's, it's something that I never get tired of. And it's, it's, and it's definite note. I love this chopper scene. "Who is she?" He's just shook. And then Luffy's the only one that has like the to- typical Luffy reaction. He's like, oh, you're still alive? But everyone else is just losing their mind, for better or for worse. "How long have you been on board?" "On a while. I was, I was below deck reading a tad bit and took a shower." "I borrowed these clothes. They're yours, right?" "How dare you, broke works witch, Monkey D. Luffy." "You haven't forgotten what you did to me, have you?" "Why you, what, what did you do to this beautiful woman, Luffy?" And immediately, I love Sanji's reaction to this cuz it's the reaction you would expect. "We don't want any troubles. Get off the ship." He's like, who's up in the background? "Hey, don't lie, I didn't do anything to you. I suffered a great deal because of you. Now take responsibility." "Who is she? Please leave or I'll call the Navy." "What do you want, anyway?" "I wanna join your crew." And that's how chapter two hundred and seventeen ends. I love these, these pages, these sequence of pages right here, man. You know, some of my favorite moments in the entire series are the Strahis just lollygagging and trolling on the crew, or on, on the ship and just whenever they're trolling in general. But when Robin joined and just seeing everyone's initial reactions to that, seeing how different all of them react and how you expect them to react to how each other would it's like a normal conversation between them and you get to learn so much between each character like if somebody was reading One Piece for the first time they would know exactly how each character works based on what this scene was right here you would immediately be able to tell like exactly it just even by the smallest things like by Usopp trolling right here with a putting a megaphone to his mouth and saying yo we don't want any trouble just get off the ship but he's not he's not manly enough to to say to her face I mean Usopp is manly enough to say to her face but you know he was just trolling he was like yo I'm 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 gonna be back here I'm checking now like yo do your thing get out of here get out of here you know so really really funny stuff but just at its core it's showing how each character is and just amplifying their strengths to to the best and I love it and then Robbins once again taking us back to Alabasta but in a different way this time you know she's taking us back to the story arc we just witnessed and stating listen you haven't forgotten what you told me have you indicating yo to the reader you better not have forgotten what 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 Luffy said cause that that was something I'm taking that to heart monkey D Luffy you haven't forgotten what you did to me have you oh hey don't lie I didn't do anything to you I suffered a great deal because of you now take responsibility I wanna join your crew so it's 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 amazing to me man I I just I I I absolutely adore it dude it's about chapter two hundred and eighteen why the log pose is dome shaped and right here we get to see Cami and 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 Hachi so here we go and we start off the chapter with Alabasta make him drink this right away it's the antidote to crocodiles poison even if he gets buried under all this rubble his rubbery body should save it's not recorded here this is just a history of the kingdom what why did you lie you knew how disappointing the history of Alubarna wasn't carved from that stone had out all the information about the weapon you were after even its whereabouts if you had told him what was written there it would have been the end the kingdom would have fallen into his hands I don't care about kingdoms or people's lives none of that matters to me but I had no intention of giving crocodile the weapon I don't understand then why'd you come here events don't always live up to one's expectations I was looking for the real pony glyph among the many pony glyphs that exist in the world it's the only one that recounts the true history true history what do you mean doesn't matter for twenty years I've been searching for it I have no more leads to go on this was my last hope but it wasn't the one I have nothing more to live for I may as well die here I'm tired of this life all I wanted was to know the true history too many obstacles stood between me and my dream what a panel tell me something do you mean can these scripts be spun together to tell of an untold history is that what the pony glyphs are if so then why are we Robin looks over then uh Cobra immediately he's like flaggnards what was that and then Luffy picks them both up okay let's get out of here stop I don't want to like yo you just can't help but look back on this in hindsight and be like fighters stop I don't want to live yes you do leave me here why should I listen to you I wanted I wanted to die and you made me live that's your crime I have nowhere to go and nowhere to run to or nowhere to return to so let me join your crew well I guess that could be helped yeah I kinda love chopper's innocent uh 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 innocence just standing right there he's just everyone else is is like yeah do doing their their shocked expression or their happy expression is just Luffy's you know stoic just no 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 type of most in his face by the way chopper's sitting here just calmly actually listening to this entire thing like flaggnards he's trying to empathize with her and whatnot I love that panel don't worry she's not a bad person now let me just look back on this right all this right quick this stuff right here man it's so incredible to me because within the confines of what took place in this arc and you think about why it is that everything went down in the way that we were done in the mausoleum you know why Robin told or at at the time we thought told crocodile the truth but crocodile said screw all that nonsense man alright you wanna do this to me and he went down uh and cut her right after she attempted to cut him or attempted to to hurt him after you know using the water and trying to pwn him but while that was going down I should say after all that went down you had this moment in the situation right here and just within these lines of dialogue you have so much importance to what is going to take place later on within one story because of course this led into Cobra's interest in the pony glyphs and interest in the history the true history and entrance and and of course that would lead into interest between the entire actual true history of the nefertari family and what took place within the void century and 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 what actually happened all those years ago right that of course would become a little plot point later on down the line but what I love so much about this is that within these the within this sequence and the three characters that were in it with Robin Cobra and Luffy good to see exactly how each character is you know Robin just from this alone just from these three panels alone I'm immediately like flaggnards during during the crew like I got you you have a dream you're good like you did not tell the one the most dangerous person that you knew the truth because you value that you had a value that went beyond your own survival you had a value to yourself that went beyond surviving against him knowing damn what he's about to do and she put her own values beyond that and then after that after she took the good deed she took the rod of doing the good deed she's like flaggnards I gotta take and I gotta separate responsibility for my actions this is it all I wanted to do was accomplish my dream and learn about the true history of the world with the real pony glyph and right here we we figure out this one extremely important integral thing to the entire story but also not that it's important to the story but that's important to a character that's about to join us and in the following page we get her panel too many obstacles stood between me and my dream and who do we know takes out obstacles between where what one where one wants to do and can't do because of certain thing and doesn't have the freedom to do certain thing straw hats man straw hats it's just the way that it's written the the certain pieces of dialogue that are said between these between these characters I just I adore it man it doesn't matter for twenty years I've been searching for it I have no more leads to go on that was my last hope but it wasn't the one it's like she basically gave up so well flaggnards I might as well die here this is it for me too many obstacles stood between me and my dream too bad and right there you empathize with Robin man cause like how many times have you been so close or been on your journey of wanting to get whatever it is that you wanted and you had so many things that stopped you so many things that life just got in the way and it's like well flaggnards and this is directly after Robin and like I said put her put her own values above survival so all these different things to immediately even more so than the arc already did you know really bring this character into that gray area and bring that character I mean like I said the entire arc built that from the beginning that Robin wasn't truly on crocodile's side it was more like this little gray thing she was very interested in the straw hats but now we're getting to see how she actually works and how she actually moves and seeing you know her at her at her worst and I just loved it so much man that this line right here stop I don't want to live man and when she says leave me here and Luffy's like yo why should I listen to you who are you to give me orders and that's such such a Luffy thing to do bro like I love that dog amazing stuff I was an archaeologist by the time I was eight then I had a bounty put on my head an archaeologist I come from a family of them for the next twenty years I headed from the government but a child can't live on the high seas alone I survived by joining various outlaw gangs as a result I became an expert in apparating in the shadows it can be a big help to you you're very confident what's your specialty assassination and Usopp's like flaggnards Luffy a bonitarian you have to go to you too dangerous and once again just incredible character dynamics and 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 uh and interactions here my favorite part about this entire situation is that it's Usopp and Robin sitting at a table in the middle of the flipping going Mary where he has a light at her like if it's a police interrogation he has a light at her he has the pencil on his head finding all these things about Robert Robert's like alright well I'm just gonna tell you all this all this stuff yo and it's definitely stuff that came back to interfruition within her flashback and we saw the 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 inside from it here it's just great you know it's fantastic because whenever she says or whenever Usopp says you know what's your specialty and and she says assassination you get to see that she has that 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 quirky um uh uh comedic side to her which is what every single straw hat has and it's just immediately makes her a lovable character and then Usopp's reaction to that is so awesome man and then right here we have in the following panel Robin uses her fruit to move over Luffy and Chopper and then move them over again did you guys hear me and he's he's just tickling them and they're just loving it she's already won them over the idiots and then Nami's like foolish or how foolish a few days ago she was the vice president of Broke Works that woman was crocodile's partner you may have fooled Luffy but you can't fool me you make one wrong move and I'll throw you out yes I'll keep that in mind and I just I love this for Nami because it stays within character you know within the arc of Jai and Skypia Nami goes through her own character arc because Nami is a very logical being for Nami an existence like Skypia does not exist you know she's a very logical individual so the fact that she's already on this crew is showing just or the amount of impact that Luffy and co especially Luffy has had on her on having the freedom to believe in certain things that are out of this world and I love that Nami is the one who is with Luffy whenever she whenever whatever um whenever he's taking on NL because it's like she's she's able to experience that first and foremost before or I should say more than anyone else I believe I I think that she was the one that really needed to see that fight and those moments of Luffy taking on NL because she was a non-believer for so long you know her and Zorro are the ones that are like the logical thinkers within the crewists but especially Nami and it leads back into her backstory and her character so it makes sense when it comes to her character arc and we see it in multiple versions or multiple portions in Jaya which is why it's so awesome to see whenever she's actually able to see Skypia and goes out and has so much fun in Skypia but also that Oda put her at the forefront with Luffy over there to showcase like flaggnards this is what you signed up for this is what you have this is the person that you're with who's gonna be the king of the pirates believe in the unbelievable you know there's no way that you could possibly beat NL of course there is he's made of rubber and I just love how Nami was the one that was there for that battle right there cause it just it fit to where her character arc was at that point in time and it led into I I feel like she needed to go through that in order to go through what went next in Water Seven's lobby and in terms of her character arc just more Nami great Nami's a phenomenal character man I I anytime I get an opportunity to put to um to put Nami over I'm gonna do it by the way I brought a few crocodile's gems with me oh sister I love you and and what I love so much about this it's like immediately Robin just knows so you just um you have this like sense that Robin just knows people you know she's a people she's even though she doesn't interact with many people she's very observant she knows exactly what people like she knows what they like and what they don't like she knows how to pull on people's strings and how to let go and 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 tease them and whatnot right and she's done she's done that for every single character so far she plays along with Usopp's things she knows that Luffy and 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 Chopper you just need to push him around tickle him around a little bit you already won them over with Nami it's money it's just fantastic and right here with Usopp's like wait 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 Nami's hooked too what a dirty trick oh love oh drifting love but I am a charred piece of floating along your current and there goes Sanji he never had a chance the thunderbolt of your beauty has struck me I am but a driftwood being splintered by the rabbits I made you a snack thank you I guess it's up to you and me to be strong what a bunch of pushovers and then Usopp looks back with a very stern expression Luffy with the with the hand antlers from Robin is like alright I'm Chopper this scene in the anime is hilarious it is downright just those three Luffy Usopp and Chopper are like buggy Mister Three and Luffy in a pull down just non-stop hilarious moments dude I I love it and it's like flaggnards she won Usopp over too this is nice is it always like this pretty much I see and Zorro's like man what's her game and um and what I love so much about this is that when you see the smile from Robin you know looking back on it in hindsight I'm like man like that's a smile that came from the heart but I recall the time we'll go into the story for the first time that smile had so many different um like la- layers to it where I was like man what is that smile is that a true smile is she only on this crew to take advantage of them like she did for the other ones is like there's something different here that that's a genuine smile but there's way more to it than that and and that's all based on drawing and and on all this stuff and all the context that we just got behind that uh so some powerful stuff what's your log what's your log post course navigator ahead west by northwest Robin she gave you a gem didn't she and Sanji how about a snack give me a minute Nami do you think the next island will be snowy haven't you had enough snow after Alabasta and Autumn Island should be coming up next great I like all autumn too rain no it's not rain rice crackers no some things fall huh and here you get the flippy I love this double spread dude and then here comes a ship falling down from the sky anything man can imagine is a possibility in reality Willie Karen I'm gonna go ahead and put this right here because this is Jaya Skypia anything man can imagine is a possibility in reality from the very first moments of this arc Oda laid in the groundwork for telling you what's coming telling you this is about to be a journey and an adventure that a lot of people are gonna be like this there's no way there's no way there's no way these unimaginable absolutely insane things no one believed in Montbank Nolan no one thought that that the gold was actually in Skypia nobody thought Skypia actually existed you know nobody thought that the bell was still up there the thing that brought apart two people for so many years and yet in this one arc all of those possibilities all those ifs became truths because anything that man can imagine is a possibility in reality and when we're able to have a powerful quote like that that perfectly encapsulate the story arc you're about to put within an incredible moment too having a ship coming out of the sky where you're like what in the flying flaggnards especially for me when I was first going through One Piece there was no Crunchyroll so I did not know that Skypia was a thing so I was like holy sweet mother of flaggnards why is this ship falling out of the sky you know what I'm saying so like I didn't know Skypia was next and I loved it dude I gotta write this down and I I forgot how much I love that panel I adore that panel man you know lately I've been coming back to this arc a lot in terms of thinking about it because I've noticed how how much how much I value themes in storytelling the theme of freedom within this series Neon Genesis Evangelion uh Yume Neko then Final Fantasy six you know the themes of of freedom in any type of way that you think about that concept that word that theme is very very powerful for me you know that's the theme that has the closest place in my heart out of all the themes because you know the freedom to chase one's dreams the freedom to be oneself the freedom to look at one's true self the freedom to you know act in a way that one wants to act whatever the case may be right there's a lot of versions of freedom the fact to actually be free you know for being enslaved and whatnot Jai Furu also does this very well but free uh just themes in general I've found that a lot of my favorite series also has my favorite themes I figured out the theme is something that's very very big for me I feel like now whereas before I'd be like no the top two things that are most important to me in a story or character and in the plot and this and the story behind it now it switched to where character and theme have become my favorite things in my favorite stories and I think it's because of the way that certain writers or certain creators utilize how they execute upon telling their themes through their characters arcs and that's fair when that's done extremely well not only does it make a great story but it makes for one that's that I absolutely adore especially if it's a theme that's near and dear to my heart right like like a like a freedom like a chasing dreams like a nothing is impossible you know like those types of themes that I that are I really that I I really love which is what this arc's all about but when you're able to capture within a one panel or one double spread What your arc is about to be about and capture the adventure aspect, the tone of your story. In that one, it's it's powerful. I really, really love that page, man. I absolutely adore it, dude. Theme is a powerful thing, man, and theme is honestly why this arc. Throughout all of these years has stuck with me. Seriously, I mean, just. The concepts, look at that. Out of the sky? A galleon? Everyone's shook. How? And even Robin's like Flaggnards and the ship comes right down crashing into the water. You see all them just turbulence all over the place. Hang on, grab onto something. What's going on? What is this? It's a dream. It's all a bad dream. A dream? That's a relief. You gotta love that. It's the interactions, man. They're so great. There's more coming down. Look out. Hold the rudder. What good will that do? Luffy, protect the ship. She'll break up. Okay, huh? Usopp? Don't worry, just relax and close your eyes. I'm praying, he's like, man, Flaggnards, please protect me, God. Then slowly open them. See, it's a nice people morning and then a skeleton just comes running from my face like. Don't throw it away, don't throw it this way, you fool. It's still coming down. Skeletons? And then you see all of this rubble that just came right out of the sky. Why is it raining ships? It's crazy, there's there's nothing up there. What's wrong, Nami? The log post. It's broken, it's pointing upward and not moving. It's not broken. The magnetic field of another island. Has made it switch headings. And if it's pointing skyward, that can only mean one thing. Our log post has been scap- has been captured by a sky island. Now I wanna talk about this final line of dialogue right here. Our log post has been captured by a sky island. And the fact this is coming from our newly added crew member, Nico Robin. I think there are certain lines of dialogue. That when said by a certain character. It adds an immediate level of value to it based on context given beforehand. And this is one of those lines of dialogue where you immediately like. It's, it has to have some sort of weight to it. The reason why I say that. Is because we just went through that portion with her and Cobra. And her telling all of that to Cobra and to Usopp. About her history and her journey. And we know there's one thing based on what we know from Robin. Whenever she's actually being full one hundred percent honest with herself. That she truly cares about. And that is her dream. And her dream is entangled with history and truth. We know that Robin wouldn't lie to us when it comes to a situation like this. We know that there's something. This level of value, there's a level of weight to this line right here. And the reason why that weight exists is because of the context that was given to us earlier on in the chapter. This line would not have hit as hard if it came from anyone else, man. And I always love lines of dialogue that are like that, lines that only certain characters can hit. If you wanted to have a specific reaction or you wanna initiate a, elicit a certain reaction within the reader. Just. I adore it, man. I love it because every character is reacting as they should be. You know, Nami's very new to this. She is our navigator, yes. But she is new to this entire situation out here in the Grand Line. The lock pose is, it's broken. Like what, what's going on? It's pointing upwards. It shouldn't be pointing upwards. And Robin's like, nah, baby, it's not broken. It's that the magnetic field of another island has made it switch headings. And if it's pointing skyward, there can only be one thing. That our lock was been captured by a sky island. Robin, who's been on the seas for so long. We saw her out on the sea by herself. Out in the Grand Line, so we know that she can take her, we know she can take care of herself. We know that she's accustomed to using log poses. And we know how much she values history and truth. She would not babble this. Just for the sake of babbling it. Like it is. It has weight to it because it's coming from Robin. And because of the context that comes before it. And I really appreciate that being the final line that take, that would take if I was a weekly reader, reader at the time. That would have taken me into the next chapter. And be like Flaggnards. Is there really a sky island? And the fact that there was a quote within this very chapter that stated, anything man can imagine is a possibility in reality. Just what an incredible chapter and what an incredible way to transition from one arc seamlessly into your next one. Just absolutely great stuff, man. Even with just these two chapters alone. I'm immediately reminded of why I love. Not only just the series, but this arc. As much as I do, man. Good Flaggnards, dude. I lo- I just love that, man, cause that is, just like with the Luffy line earlier. Whenever Luffy was like, yo, who, who are you to tell me what to do? It was such a Luffy line, bro, like, don't tell me what to do, dog. You know, having. Having lines. I'm using the pen for dialogue right, yeah, yes, I am. Having lines of dialogue. That are. I should say. That have. Weight. To them. Because. The character. Saying it. Having lines that. Because certain character says it, you can take that to the bank. It's kinda like later on in the series. Well, uh we I always look back on this and 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 give it in terms of like the power skill and discussion for Weevil. Where we immediately are like, man, Weevil's a powerful character because Kizaru stated he's powerful. And if Kizaru stated that he is a threat. Weevil's a threat. It's that type of situation. There are certain characters that you could just trust their words when they say something. And it adds value to those words. And that's what we saw here with the Robin situation and I just, I love it because immediately there's this level of mystique, there's this level of mystery. We we ha- we haven't hit an island yet, we haven't hit anything. We're still in transitionary portion. Within one chapter. We're able to see. And think about, okay, what is gonna happen now with Robin? And how is her joining the crew going to change the dynamics within the crew? And how is it gonna change how we're gonna move with the story going forward? And we immediately get to see those changes within this chapter. The first one with the interactions. Flaggnards, you see everyone immediately take a liking to her. We see that she is very um. She she's a very. People-like person. From an observant standpoint. Like where she doesn't really talk to many people, but when she needs to talk, she will talk. But she's very observant and she knows exactly, she knows people's strengths and weaknesses. Um and Zoro's the only one who's like Flaggnards, you know, I I don't know about her, dog. But it's a part of his character, you know, that's the way that he is. And so you immediately get to see all of their interactions, their dynamics and how things could go forward with this. We're like, man, Robin, she feels like she's just, she's already a part of the crew. And it's a meet, an immediate fit. Another piece of of this wonderful puzzle. And then the next question is. Okay, then what now? What about this real Ponicle? What about Robin's? Love for history and truth? And the fact that she, that she wanted to be an archaeologist. Where does all this come into play within the future of the story? And immediately in one chapter. You see that even for something like this. Where there's thing that comes out of nowhere that shocks them all, a ship coming out of the sky. And then the log post breaks, it's pointing upwards. Everyone's like, yo, that's that's not right. This thing is broken. And Robin with her knowledge. That one person who should be the most logical of them all states. Flaggnards. It must have been captured by a sky island. And that's how you end your chapter. Just amazing stuff. It's so brilliant, man. Like I know that admiration is the furthest thing from understanding. Shout out to Eisen. And I know that my 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 admiration for the story. Uh goes beyond where I I it's like a lot of the times I can't really see. Um things that other people see because I'm so like, I look at everything with such roasted glasses. Cause I just can't help it. That's how much love I have for this story. But in this case, man, I truly do believe that all this is just complete and utter genius because. I've read so many stories. And I've played so many games and watched so many movies. And I'm in this so deep. But there is certain things that just really, really hit me. Hard. And that is character. And character specifics, character interactions, character dynamics. Certain things surrounding character because character is what propels your story in the directions you wanna go. You could have a garbage story or I should say a garbage plot. But if your characters are awesome, they're gonna make it awesome. So within this story. Because of my attachment to these characters, you can put them in the worst of situations. I watch failure arcs for God's sakes. With the most simple and basic plots ever and I still enjoy them because. It's the straw hats. But when it comes to actually taking a very interesting plotline. With what appears to be or uh. I'm talking like a fan if we're gonna know, um which we know has very awesome themes attached to it. And it's awesome mystery attached to it. But then you also start giving all of the characters their own specific moments with even even just a chapter. To shine and be like, okay, we're already starting to see certain shifts here. And this brand new character who was introduced already has this. This level of importance to them. In just a few panels, in just a few pages. It's very, very impressive and it's very hard to pull off because. It's hard to pull off selling a character, selling a story idea or selling anything in a story. You know how hard it is to write stories, man? And. The fact that coming off of Alabasta off that high. Of of that that an emotional, that hype high of Alabasta. And immediately give us a a a situation like this where, yes, it is this moment of, okay, we can breathe again. We're having fun on the ship. But man, there's a level of mystery here. A new character's been introduced. Something's falling out of the sky. Anything man can imagine can become a reality. It's like all these themes of the series can use a brush in your face and you're like, yo, this fits the series so well. This is adventure. This is a new journey ahead of us. This is a transitionary arc. This is One Piece, man. That's it for today's video. I don't know if I'm gonna do this again. Like I said, I just really, really wanted to get some inspiration and. And I was like, man, I I let me study some Skypie. I I I just adore this arc. And I'm glad I did this on camera, cause it gave me an opportunity to instead of writing out my thoughts, um I was able to voice them. Um so I appreciate anyone who who's here to listen to this, uh cause I know this must be boring for a lot of people, but. For the people who are still here, um I truly do appreciate y'all, man. Um shout out to. The greatness of Skypia and Jaya, man. I might come back in the future to to do this again, but I don't count on it. Like I don't, don't hold me to it. Cause this is, this usually is something I really only do on my own. It's just that today I I was just feeling it, man. I was like, man, I wanna record. But I also wanna study. And I was like, you know what? I'll do them both. It's One Piece, you know? But everybody is an awesome sauce of a day, man. Let me know what y'all thought about these two chapters. How that we went through today. If you found any awesome bits of information or insight, whenever it comes to story or. Whatever that you would like to share, I would like to read those comments in the comments just down below. And everybody's have a marvelous weekend. I don't know if I will see y'all until the end of the weekend. Uh but if I do, then I'll see y'all then. But if not, I will see y'all next week for that awesome sauce, man. Everybody has a great day, great weekend. And I'll see y'all next time, man. One Piece created and shout out to this arc, bro. Anything man can imagine. Can become a reality, bro. It's anything possible, right, really? I'll see y'all next time. Peace out. Go peace, man.